Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right, I think we're live. Welcome everyone to our work session of May seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. Jill, want to take it away?
Sure, the first thing we're going to start with is the Recreation Master Plan Outreach. Thank you Sabrina, thank you Ike for attending tonight. I see we're here with Christine Gray and also Kellin Cantrellis here to sort of walk us through the presentation. All about the master plan.
Okay.
Thank you Jill, appreciate it. Yeah, and thank you to the town board for inviting us to give our little spiel tonight on where we're at with the with the master plan. I will let Sabrina take the reins and go over how the master plan relates to the overall town comprehensive plan. I'll jump in later on with some of the goals that we've identified through the process so far, and then obviously we'll answer any questions that that the town board might have at this point. So Sabrina, it's all yours.
Okay. But before you go, so this is the presentation that like I heard the other day when I went to the session, right? So this is what you're telling residents who were showing up and perfect, okay?
Yeah, so you get to hear it the second time.
It was fascinating the first time, so.
Edge of your seat, everyone.
Alright.
I'm gonna share my screen. Bear with me. Hold on a sec. Okay, here we are with the twenty twenty-two Newcastle Recreation and Parks Master Plan. So just to give everybody a good foundation, this is just some general attributes of Newcastle. We are twenty-four thousand square miles, approximately fifteen thousand acres. We are primarily zoned, single-family residential. We have two hamlets. Within the chapel hamlet, we have a commuter rail. We're part of three major watersheds and we have several major transportation corridors running through the community. I think what's most relevant to a Parks and Recreation Master Plan is really looking at the people who live here. The population here says seventeen thousand. We are actually just over eighteen thousand according to the decennial, I think it's the twenty twenty census. Where we are closer to eighteen thousand people. But the most fascinating demographic is the fact that our population is highest among five to nineteen-year-olds and thirty-five to fifty-nine years year-olds. We are also seeing a slow reduction of the populations between eighteen and thirty-three and an increase in seniors of age sixty-plus. So I think those demographics speak really well to our programming and our park use in our community. Here's a picture of a Newcastle in relation to all of the parks and open spaces that are not only locally owned, but also owned by New York State as well as Westchester County. This map also includes open space-like properties such as golf courses or country clubs. So if you look at the community, you can see that there is a wealth of open space throughout Newcastle. When we talk about undertaking a Parks and Recreation Master Plan, we're really looking at implementing an action as found within the twenty seventeen Comprehensive Plan. And you may recall, some of you were around when we adopted the twenty seventeen Comprehensive Plan, or and some of you may have even participated in developing that document. There are really five areas that all of the policies and the actions surround. Livable built environment, how we live in our houses, how we go shopping, travel to and from work. Harmony with nature, and that's how we go out and we play in the environment, you know, our parks, our streams, our wetlands, our trees. The resilient economy, how we make a living in our community. Healthy community, what's what is what attracts people to being healthier about our community? And how we fit within the region and responsible regionalism. For the first time ever, the two thousand seventeen Comprehensive Plan took these five areas and recognized Newcastle as a community working within itself, right? You know, that things were interrelated. It wasn't, let's look at housing over here or commercial use over here. And oh, by the way, let's look at our natural environment. It really recognizes for the first time in our planning history how everything works together and is woven together and affects each other. When we talk about recreation in open space, there are five specific goals that really, really align themselves with parks and recreation. That's not to say there aren't other goals within the two thousand seventeen Comprehensive Plan that are impacted and included in the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, okay? But these five, protect and manage open spaces, increase availability of recreational programming, planning for equitable access to recreational services and facilities, improving trail linkages. Those are directly related to either programming or facility maintenance and aligns with activities currently undertaken in the Parks and Recreation Department. What is a Parks and Recreation Master Plan? So very much like the town's Comprehensive Plan, it's a document that looks at where we are today when it comes to recreation and parks, and it looks to how we will grow into the future. You know, what are what are the things that we need to consider when it comes to parks, open spaces and recreation for Newcastle today and tomorrow? What's good today? What's not so good today? How would we make those not-so-good things better? And are there things in the recreation and open space arena that we don't even know about today that we need to plan for tomorrow? So this document is very much like the Comprehensive Plan in that it sets forth goals and actions to take us from today into the future. It's about a five-to-ten-year document that will guide us when we come when it comes to Parks and Recreation Planning for Newcastle. When we talk about Recreation and Parks Master Planning in Newcastle, we're really looking at two different areas. We're looking at the recreational programming, the art classes, the sports that the children play. Recreational programming is a large component of our Recreation and Parks Master Plan. That is marrying with our actual physical parks and open spaces. Parks, passive parks, active parks. All of that gets tied together with the recreational programming and establishes our Recreation and Parks Master Plan. Just to give you a sense of the planning process, we really began this process in twenty twenty where we began to collect information. We are still collecting information today, so all of the meetings that we're having with the community, the two sessions that we recently held, any feedback that we get from the community, we will take that feedback and incorporate it into our planning process. We began in twenty twenty where we adopted a scope of work, we formed a subcommittee, we actually released an online survey. There was community outreach events, community workshops. We'd started to trail count. For the first time in the history of the town, we know how many people are using our parks and our trails. In twenty twenty-one, even to today, twenty twenty-two, we began to develop the goals and the actions and really the meat of the master plan through looking at a SWOT analysis. I said before, looking at the strengths and the weaknesses. What are the opportunities when it comes to recreation and park planning? What are the threats when it comes to to Recreation and Parks planning? We looked at open space and trail management. We did a program needs assessment. We did an evaluation of the actual staff and the budget in the Parks and Recreation Department. We put together goals and objectives that are continually changing based on community input, based on commission input, based on your input. And we put together park profiles. Right now, we're in the process of refining that information, where we'll refine the goals and objectives. We'll conduct additional public outreach, where we'll start to prioritize implementation and actually start to compile a draft plan. In twenty twenty-two, we are hoping that the draft plan will be adopted and by the Recreation Commission, and it will be put forth to your board, the town board, for formal adoption by the end of this year. And so now I'm going to turn it over to Ike, who's going to actually talk about some of the goals that are in process as we move through this this process. And he's going to talk to you about what each of those mean. And note, Ike, I am actually, I have to run to the planning board in ten minutes. If you're not done with this slide, I will try and turn it over. I don't know if I can get it to you, so you might have to just talk without the slide.
I appreciate that. Thank you Sabrina.
You're welcome.
We'll make it work. We'll survive. Thank you again Sabrina. We're getting this through there. So as Sabrina mentioned, I'm going to go over some of the the goals that have been identified so far throughout this this process that we've this journey we've been on for the last year and a half or so, two years now. And for each goal, I'll go over some of the action plans or recommendations that we've come up with so far. It's not an all-encompassing list. It's, as Sabrina mentioned before, it's evolving as we make our way through this process until we till we come with a formal document. And even after that, over the next five, ten years, we'll come up with other goals and recommendations based on the changes that we we come across during that time period. So goal number one was plan for the future. And these goals, again, were compiled through the surveys, which at this point we we've received over a thousand responses, which I was thrilled with. I think that's great for 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 us anyway, and for the population, for the town. And from staff and through our recommission. So goal number one is plan for the future, which obviously we're doing right now with with updating our master plan and going through that process. Some of the other things that we've, as far as recommendations or actions under goal number one would be really taking a deeper dive into our trails and not that we want to go through another master plan process, but almost creating its own little master plan for our trails and trail development. One of the things that we've we've noticed with these trail counters is the amount, I would have never guessed the amount of traffic that that these trails see. I knew it was a lot, didn't realize it was this much. I think we're averaging ten thousand unique hits per month, just at Whippa Will alone. So I don't know, that blew my mind the first time I heard it. And even looking at you know, going on goal number two, but even looking at Gaddney with the amount of traffic at that park, I think we've seen what, over two hundred thousand unique hits from vehicle traffic going in and out of that park over the over the last year since we put that counter in. So it's an understatement to say that these parks see a lot of traffic. So creating a developmental plan and a maintenance plan for these trails over the long haul, I think is really important. And one of the other things that we've identified in planning for the future, kind of your outreach and goals, is an indoor municipal multipurpose community center that would allow us to expand our programming and not have to rely on outsourced sources or facilities and really be more self-reliant. So those are just some of the things we've identified in in planning for the future. Goal number two, protect, manage, maintain existing parks, open spaces and facilities. This again goes back to the amount of traffic that that our facilities see. So so really, this master plan's going to help us put some things in place that will over the long haul, will really be beneficial for all of our facilities. And one of those things we've actually started to do now with more collaboration with the Conservation Board. One of the things that's big out there now is is the vine squad. They're helping us take care of some of the invasive species. And so take a deeper dive in into those aspects in protecting our sensitive environmental areas around our parks and open space facilities. So it's some of the options under goal number two. Goal number three, provide quality programming events is something that we always strive to do. I do have to give a shout out to our staff because I I think they've done a great job doing this. So, I'm sorry, what was that? Oh, thought there was something. So under goal number three, some of the actions is to continue to modify or monitor our programming. Programs do do Evan flows where they'll be cyclical. With really strong attendance for a while, then they'll dip for a little bit. So it's just staff to continue to monitor that, see if they pull things out of the cycle or or introduce new programming. It's something we're always looking to do. And obviously, hosting events both in Chapua and and Millwood. You know, one of the things that we're introducing this year with our outdoor movies is we'll be hosting an outdoor movie on June tenth over at Millwood Park. So we're really looking forward to that. We're thinking it'd be a nice little event for everybody. And we'll have one in Chapua in August, so just for future planning. Goal number four is engage and inform the public. Some of the feedback we received was they found it difficult to either navigate our site or not find the information that that we have. And we have quite a bit that we're always kicking out there, especially with all the events that we have going on in our programming. One of the big things is our social services. Since, or even before Bass, but with Bass now, our new social service worker, she's been phenomenal. And the amount of information that she has and pumps out to the folks and our residents that need it is is amazing and really helpful. And we really want to look at a way to to make it easier for those people to access that information. Not everybody accesses a website the same way or visits email. So that's one of the things that we're going to look at to try to improve, you know, over the next year or two. It's kind of high, it's it's high in our priority, high on the recommission's priority list to get that done. One of the other things we had looked at or talked about that came up was whether it's an app or some sort of interactive way for people to easier feel that notify us easier with any issues in the park. So if they're out on one of our trails, say the Red Trail Academy, you know, they can pop on this app quick and identify a problem, it'll pin where they're at. It just makes it easier for our staff to find it, locate it and take care of it. So just some things that we're going to look at going forward to help get our word out there and help them obviously be able to get in touch with us a little bit easier. Goal number five, improve park open space and facility conditions. And group six, I've been kind of, goal six, I've been kind of grouping these two together. They're different, but some of their stuff overlaps as well. Utilizing upgraded system parks and facilities in open space. One of the big things we want to do here that was high on the recommission's priority list as well was to evaluate our our ADA accessibility in all of our facilities. So as we go through and improve our parks, you know, one of the things we've been working on is is Millwood and trying to update that park, you know, between the field, the lights, I think the next stop is going to be the playground there and the pathway. But as we make these improvements, making sure that we're up to date on on all of our ADA and just making the parks as accessible as we can. So that's one of the big things that we're going to look at. Some of the other things that have come up through the process is turf field seems to be a big thing, especially with the with the youth sports groups in town going forward. And obviously, you can you can almost guess where this recommendation is coming from, but renovating Amsterdam to be more suitable for our summer camp program because it's it's been so successful up there. So just some of the things under goal five. Goal six is is similar in the ADA aspect. Upgrading our playground equipment and community gardens and things like that, all fall under both of those those goals. So I know I kind of ran through that quick, wanted to hit the hit the highlights of each. So I'll I'll open it up. I also wanted to get done before Sabrina left, so I'm going to try to sneak in there quick, make sure she can change that slide for us. But so if you guys have any questions?
Yeah, quick question, like what's the cost to maintain, if there is an average of the fields, as opposed to a turf field? Obviously, the upfront cost is vastly different, but what's the maintenance cost?
So that's actually the conversation we had at the recommission on on Thursday night. I'm going to work on putting some formal numbers together just to give you a better idea. I don't want to guess right now. And you know, it could be way off. But yes, you you know, it's it's always you know, it's environmental and and cost are the two big discussions that come into play with with the turf field. The initial cost for the turf field is obviously high, higher, depending on the size of the field. But it's also virtually, I'm not going to say it's maintenance-free, because nothing's ever maintenance-free. I don't care what they tell you. But it's virtually maintenance-free for the lifespan of that turf field, which typically on the low side is ten years to fifteen years before you have to look at kind of addressing the turf, depending on how much use it gets. And the way our fields are right now, they would get they would get plenty of use. So but then there's you reverse that with the annual cost of of trying to maintain an all-grass field, which is is not just the material cost, but it's the man-hours that we have to put in on those fields.
Alright, I look forward to that.
Yep.
I I have another question on the turf fields. I recall from years ago when my kids were young that the Amsterdam field was one of the better grass fields. I don't know if that's still the case, but I wonder if it's sort of a waste to turn one of the better grass fields into a turf field, although it could have a lot to do with the amount of space there is there to make a big enough competition field. But I I just wondered whether it would be worthwhile to take one of the more challenging fields that, you know, get more water logged and make one of those into a turf field and perhaps also, you know, make one of the town fields into a turf field so that people come into town and, you know, we could provide some more economic vitality and bring in more business.
Folks, I have to step off. Thank you.
Thanks Sabrina. Thank you.
I mean, would it make sense to look at the the town rec field? I'm not sure if the dimensions are okay and, you know. I don't know how people would feel about that, but it would certainly bring more people into town rather than up in Amsterdam.
So we we haven't identified a specific field to turf. We haven't picked out Amsterdam, Gaddney, you know, the conversation hasn't gone that far in the process. I mean, we are currently renovating Amsterdam Field One, but we're keeping it all-natural grass at this point. So yeah, listen, I look at the, you know, rec field for the ideal, if it's big enough where you can, because rec field is already a multipurpose field. We doing baseballs and softball, but in the fall, we also use, it's their soccer and lacrosse and our flag and our flag football program are on that field. So yeah, if we can, if it's big enough to put a competition soccer field in there, sure, rec field would be ideal because we can, it's big enough to make it a multipurpose turf field. And so you get more than one youth sport group on that field. But we're not at that point in the conversation yet where we're we're really picking out fields of which would be turf, you know, which would be better or worse. You know, as far as drainage, I think Evergenny is probably our worst field, as far as drainage goes. That it it could not rain for three days and four days and it's still still wet up there. So but that's, you know, that's a conversation I think we would have a little further down the road if it actually came a little closer to being a reality, you know, reality of what field we use.
And are you going to have more in-person sessions?
We don't have any more in-person scheduled sessions scheduled at this point. You know, we are going to take to get some feedback from both of those sessions. We still have feedback coming in with the surveys. I think one of the things that we'll we'll try to do going forward is working with Kellin, who I have, while I've got him on here, thank you Kellin for all of the work you've put in so far. Much appreciated. Couldn't have done it without you. And of course, Christine, well, thank you. But I think really what we're going to try to do is put a draft together at this point and get it to the recommission for them to review, take a look at it. And then as far as the timing goes, and this could be up to the town board, after the recommission kind of makes some of their changes, we're passing on to the town board for review. Not for formal adoption, but just for review and to answer any questions and we can make modifications after that. But at that time, also release it to the public and give them two weeks to take a look at it, go through it, and then open up the public comment after that. And we'll take those that feedback as well and put it in towards the final document. So that's our plan right now. You know, like everything else, subject to change if needed.
Thank you.
Alright, that sounds great.
Thanks Ike. Thank you Christine, thank you Kellin.
Thank you all. I have to say, I was really impressed when I saw it in person. I thought you guys did a I mean, this is good, but I mean, when they were as an audience too. And I thought there was nice engagement. You guys did a great job.
Thank you. At least I appreciate it. Alright.
Alright, thank you.
You know where to find us. So thank you.
Thank you all. Appreciate it. So, next on the agenda?
Right, virtual meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, so last month, as part of the state budget, the public officers law was amended to allow for video conferencing. Within the public officers law, there's a law that we all more commonly refer to as the open meetings law. And the amendment is essentially going to do a couple of things. One, through, it it was June eighth, it was extended yesterday, June fourteenth. Fully virtual meetings are okay. After June fourteenth, municipalities have the option to take advantage of this new state statute that allows for video conferencing. To do that, two things have to happen. The town has to adopt a local law, and that's what's in the package tonight. Though in the local law, there are two ways of doing this. The town board can either authorize itself and other statutory boards in the town to take advantage of the ability to do video conferencing as it's laid out in the open meeting, the amended open meetings law. So that's one option. The other would be to authorize each of the statutory boards to independently decide whether they want to adopt a resolution and take advantage of this option. That seemed a little clunky, because if they, for a board, first of all, I I think that the attractiveness, the advantages of video conferencing, except when you have, you know, connectivity issues. You know, I I think we're all sold on that. And it's a nice option to have when you need it. So and if for some reason a board didn't want to take advantage of the option, that would be their prerogative, but it would, at least it would be there and it wouldn't be an extra step that they would have to take. So the way the the local law is drafted now, it would basically make that option available to to the statutory boards. So that's step number one. Step number two is the town board has to enact a written policy as to how video conferencing is done. The statute, though, lays out a whole series of requirements that the policy has to incorporate. So it's not like a policy has to be developed from scratch. It really needs to walk hand in hand with what the statute, the way the statute dictates and prescribes how the video conferencing has to be done. So I'd just like to walk through what those steps are so the board's familiar with them. Criteria. So when can a statutory board take advantage of the video conferencing option? Well, the statute talks about being unable to be physically present due to extraordinary circumstances. So this is not something that would just be a routine exercise. And I'll make a key distinction. What we're talking about with the amended statute is being able to participate by video conference and not have the location that you're appearing from be open to the public.
Yeah.
Right? So that actually is allowed right now. You can you can be, you can video conference in so long as you make where wherever it is, your home or what have you open to the public, so the public could theoretically come in and and join you. Not a very practical option. So this this amendment gives board members the ability to do it and not have to take that.
And they can still be fully voting.
And they can still be fully voting. The only thing is they can't count towards a quorum. So you must have a quorum of the board physically present. So five-person board, and I hope we have any boards that are five-person. So a five-person board, if they're physically present and up to two. Okay. Then up to two members could video conference in from a closed-to-the-public remote location. Alright.
So just a clarification, if there were less than a quorum, then people could go to the location.
You don't always have the option of, but you know, you have to do that on notice though too. So when your public notice goes out of the meeting, the notice has to include where those remote members are video conferencing in from. So you'd have to be, you know, the three or however many you needed to get to a quorum, that would have to be, you have to So you'd have to be, you know, the three or however many you needed to get to a quorum. That would have to be, you have to go under the old version of the statute.
How far in advance to those conferences?
Three days, absolutely. Three days. Notice goes out on Fridays. Right, Joe?
Right.
Right. So.
I heard a fun story today, by the way, about a board that did have that. And I was like, who would ever show up at your house? And they did. It was a guy, he was recovering a board member from surgery and twelve people showed up at his house. Because there was some like contentious vote.
Can you imagine?
I hope they brought flowers.
So using the the new provision, the extraordinary circumstances, there's a some examples that are actually laid out in the statute and include disability, illness, caregiving responsibilities, or other significant or unexpected factor or event. So again, this is not a routine thing. It's something, you know, something something unavoidable comes up and you can't be there. Another requirement, so video, it has to be video, can't be phone. You have to be able to be heard, seen, identified, the way we've been doing it for for two years. There's a minutes requirement. There's the public notice. So if if board members want to take advantage of this new option, again, the public notice has to say that they're going to be appearing via video conference. You wouldn't have to give the location, obviously, but you still have to put the notice in the notice that that's going to be.
Well, what if you don't know? Like you're saying it's it's like a, you know, a care situation. So what if all of a sudden somebody doesn't have childcare? It's not in a notice.
You could still attend, you just couldn't count toward the quorum, which is the case anyway.
Right.
And you couldn't vote. The vote wouldn't count.
Right.
So that would be, or you just, if you're not there and you don't have a quorum, you can't be.
Is a three-day rule hard and fast?
Yes.
Because there are times that if you have an emergency meeting, you know, it's as soon as practicable.
Except for emergencies. Yeah.
Couldn't there be an argument that that would be an emergency occurrence that someone would find out or get ill at the last minute?
Right, you could get COVID the day before we're meeting.
And then you could, you could then argue under this sort of emergency provision, perhaps?
You know, a special meeting has to have some exigent circumstance associated with it. So if you couldn't have irregular meeting on a Tuesday, you could, I don't think you could say the next day, we're going to have a special meeting on Wednesday because we couldn't all get together on Tuesday. You know, it has to be something's come up. So we have to deal with something. It's an emergency. That's a special meeting.
But so somebody gets diagnosed with COVID on a Monday night.
You know, if you don't have a quorum, you don't meet. And that's not on, I mean, it's unusual, but it happens. Uh there's a video requirement. So the videos, we have to have a video of of that meeting. It has to be posted. There has to be a link made available on the town's website, which we already do. Members of the public have to be able to participate in real time. Again, we'll use for that. And that's basically it in terms of what the the policy is going to say. And we'll we'll, if the agenda permits, we'll have that before you next week. A couple of other things to add. The this amendment to the public officers law is going to automatically sunset in July of twenty twenty four. January one, twenty twenty four, the Committee on Open Government is going to issue a report. The reason we feel that the law was written this way with this automatic sunset is that I I think there's a little uncertainty. Not that video conferences isn't an option that's a a good one to have, and not that it can't be successful. But I think there's some uncertainty as to whether this is exactly the right way to do it. And that's what the Committee on Open Government is going to report on. So the the sunset and the report date allows a little bit of time to make any adjustments, et cetera, et cetera, if they're needed.
Yeah, I don't see a reason not to adopt this. I think it gives us flexibility.
Right.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I think our our community has really gotten used to it, like they expected at this point. It definitely has encouraged participation, which is always the key.
I have to say, I think we've done a better job than a lot of municipalities that I've heard of, where people can see us and hear us, and it's been relatively seamless. I think other municipalities have a lot greater issues.
And you have Carrie.
Yeah.
She made it seamless.
Yeah.
No, and and I have to tell you that I actually thought that that's what you were going to say, which is why it was sunsetting automatically. Because I know that um at at some point, I'm trying to remember what it was, maybe a swearing in or something, and I approached Senator Harkman, I asked him whether or not it had been renewed, and he's like, oh, it's been renewed for like thirty days. And I'm like, you know, that doesn't really help, right? And he said, you know how hard it is to even get the thirty days through? There are places that just are completely resistant to this. Either they don't have the fiber infrastructure that we do, or, you know, the population doesn't have the access that we do. He said, but there's, you know, a real opposition to it in in legislature, which I was really shocked at.
Yeah, there there are nine hundred and thirty-two towns in the state of New York and they don't all have this tech that we.
No, clearly not, yeah. A lot of towns. Okay. All right, so we'll turn around for the next one. The the remainder of the items are administrative items, but we have a couple of things that are late additions and actually emergency authorization. So if you, you don't mind, I'm just going to go through them quickly. Adoption of monthly minutes. We've got an authorization to settle the tax sorority that we discussed earlier. Authorization to extend the rental agreement for the conference rooms of Chappaqua for the evening out for the month of May. Authorization to obtain bids for the purchase and installation of highway materials. This is just for nonextended contract items. Authorization to solicit bids for a certain type of dry-aid for the Millwood Water Treatment Plant. Authorization to approve and accept the proposals for professional engineering services for the proposed generator fuel tank replacement project at the Millwood Water Treatment Plant. We have replaced the fuel tanks over at DPW, which is terrific. They had been buried below ground. We got them above ground, but we need to do the same thing over at the Millwood Water Treatment Plant. The next is a resolution in support of the town Newcastle's contract extension for the electric vehicle charging stations. This is a reimbursement from Con Ed's ready-made program. This is something else that Kellen's been working on. He's been just tremendously helpful. Next is a resolution in support of the town of Newcastle's request for funding through FEMA for the Chapala Performing Arts Center and the Community Center. So we are actually applying for two separate asset mitigation grants through FEMA for electrical upgrades and generators, emergency generators at both locations. Let's see. Next is authorization. We've got a banner request. Authorization to approve of emergency repairs of the air conditioning at the Chappaqua. So over this past weekend, we learned that the air conditioning system in the main auditorium had problems. We ended up with an emergency invoice of eleven thousand dollars. But we need to have that unit up and operating. So with the board's indulgence, we're going to ask for emergency authorization for the emergency repairs.
It's still, by the way, they, when I was there on Friday, Walter was there and they were fixing it. On Saturday during the show, it went out twice. You still had to.
Yep, yeah, it's, yeah, it's it. It's very temperamental and it needs some significant upgrades.
Yeah.
Um and we're hoping that this at least keeps it running through the season. Uh yeah, we're clear aware. And last but not least is authorization to hire John Jay Landscape Design for maintenance at Forty Eighteens Cross Road. And actually, I would ask that the resolution expand a little bit or any other. It's an hourly fee for work. So there is talk about some additional work at at Glazier, at the Meadow, and also the entranceway. So since they are our most responsible bidder, I'd like to be, when they have an hourly rate, we'd like to be able to use them for other projects as well. Okay, any questions on the administrative items? Otherwise, we do have a couple of resolutions to approve.
I move to approve payment claims of the amount of five hundred eighty thousand seventy-three dollars ninety-seven cents. Listed on the summary, pre-check writing report detailed by your detail report, posted dated May thirteenth this year. Request to be cut, nothing to claim, up until Wednesday, the eighteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Yes, fine.
Oh, I accept.
All in favor?
Aye. I move to approve the banner request of William Ravis for the period of June sixth to the twentieth of this year for congratulations seniors event on June eighteen, twenty twenty-two.
All in favor?
Aye. I move to approve emergency repairs of the air conditioning system at Chapala Performing Arts Center by Atlantic Westchester. For the total cost, eleven thousand one hundred ninety-four dollars eighty cents, as per quote dated May sixteen, twenty twenty-two.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to authorize the hiring of John Jay Landscape Design Limited for the spring cleanup and weekly maintenance of Forty Eight Cross Road and not not exceed three thousand for the initial cleanup, plus weekly maintenance costs of six hundred dollars as per quote dated May eleventh, twenty twenty-two. Any amendments to or whatever other.
Certain other town lands as needed, maybe.
As reflected, certain other town lands as needed.
I accept.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Was that it? Did we have anything else?
Put a vote on that next week?
Put that next week.
The resolution is available.
We can, we can.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Resolution in the matter of.
Just the first one maybe, and then I go straight to the therefore.
Okay. Whereas there are pending before the New York State Supreme Court, County of Westchester, tax sorority proceedings entitled matter of Alting Properties versus Board of Assessors of the Town of Newcastle. Therefore, be it resolved that the town board authorizes the settlements of these proceedings to adjust the twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-one assessments of the one old house late tax parcel as detailed in the agenda. And be it further resolved that councils for the town of Newcastle, keen and keen, together with the town administration, is hereby authorized to undertake such actions as are necessary to defactuate this settlement, including the execution and submission of the consent judgment to the court for purposes of entry. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is that it?
I think that's it.
Tomorrow is the police week barbecue, if anyone is available to attend.
It's on my calendar.
That's always, it's always nice.
How old is it?
Uh the chief's study there for this ceremony.
And just a just a reminder on the section four Chapala Performing Arts. Coming up this Saturday night, if you're available, that's great. If not, you should check it out.
Yeah, see you back then.
Oh, my goodness. See you back this Friday night and Chapala Club Fire is, I'm going for the first hour. And Chapala Club Fire is Saturday night. And it's really, it's really, it's a busy time of year now. All right, if you have a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, good night. Thank you, everybody.